Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah.
Commissioner Egenberger here. Commissioner Foster.
Here.
Commissioner Janowski is not here.
He had an excused absence.
He had an excused absence. Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Also Commissioner Singh is not here, and he also had an excused absence. Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Zuber.
Here, thank you. And we have minutes from April 1st. Does anyone want to make a motion about those?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good, all right. We have, we have an agenda with six items total on it, Patrick, well, seven items with the master plan. Is there any communication that came in? Oh, let me, I'm sorry, I'm skipping the acceptance of agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda, or is there anything late that we need to change?
No changes tonight.
Okay.
So move.
All right.
Support.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Lee and support from Commissioner Egenberger to accept the agenda. Any further discussion? All right, please signify your acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good, all right. Now I can ask Patrick about communications.
We've not received any additional communications. We have some that are received with a specific project, which we'll note during our staff reviews.
Very good, thank you. All right, we have public comment at this moment, so if anyone from the audience would like to speak on the record, you have three minutes. Anyone want to say anything about anything this evening, sir? This is separate from the public hearing. We'll talk about the specific items on the agenda during those items. Yeah, thank you. Anything, anybody? Nope? All right, very good. Let us move into the public hearing section then. We have item number one is Harvest Arbor, where we're considering a final PDD and preliminary site plan for parcel number 070-990002-702, which currently has no address. But the property is located at the southeast corner of Ford and Napier. The proposed use is a residential development with 51 detached single-family homes. Patrick, please tell us more.
Sure, thank you. The proposal is for a residential development called Harvest Arbor, which is a development of 51 proposed single-family homes at the southeast corner of Ford and Napier Road. There's one entrance proposed on Ford Road, and additionally, one emergency vehicle access proposed on Napier Road. There's a creek in the southwest corner of the property that is attributable to the Lower Rouge River. Currently, the site is vacant, and it is Zoned R2 Single Family Residential. The applicant is proposing a planned development district on the site, which allows for modifications from certain development standards of the ordinance, and requires the project to result in definite benefits to the community. Some of the definite benefits that are proposed are preservation of a heavily wooded area along the creek, preservation of wetlands, internal sidewalks in the open space, including connections to Ford and Napier, constructing sidewalk connections to Parkside State South, which will fill a gap along Ford Road. There is 40% of the site as open space, which exceeds the minimum of 25% for a planned development. There's a proposed welcome sign at the northwest corner of the site with enhanced landscaping to define the gateway. There are more trees planted than are required by the zoning ordinance. And finally, the homes will be predominantly brick, and will have a brick to the belt, which means that there will be masonry on the first floor, or masonry to the first-floor ceiling line, including walkout elevations. At the Planning Commission meeting on January 8th of this year, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary PDD, subject to conditions. And at its meeting on February 13th, the Township Board of Trustees unanimously approved the preliminary PDD, subject to conditions. The proposed layout of the final PDD and the preliminary site plan is consistent with the approved preliminary PDD. The layouts are almost identical. So from a process standpoint, the preliminary PDD has already been approved, and much like many other types of planned developments that are residential, we're at the stage of final PDD, and the applicant has opted to combine the final PDD with the preliminary site plan. So these applications are reviewed concurrently. If the final PDD and the preliminary site plan are approved by the Planning Commission and the Township Board, the last step of the process will be for the applicant to have their final engineering approved, and then, at which point, they'll go to final site plan review with the Planning Commission and the Board, based on any conditions of approval, and the final engineer approval, county approvals before that final site plan is approved. So that would be the very last step of the process. So when we reviewed the plans at the January 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, we had gone through a number of different elements of the site, and most of these comments are much the same, so we're not going to rehash all of those. One item that I'm going to note here, with the schedule regulations and modifications, just to note some of the modifications that are proposed by the applicant. So the first is lot area. The R2 district requires a minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet. The minimum lot area proposed is 8,400 square feet. The R2 district requires a minimum lot width of 100 feet, and the minimum lot width proposed is 70 feet, with 85 proposed at the corner lots. There are minimum front side and rear yard setback modifications requested as well. The proposed minimum front yard setback is 25 feet. The proposed side yard setback is five feet on one side, with a total of 15 feet for both sides. And the proposed minimum rear yard setback is 30 feet. These are all modifications from the setback standards. And finally, there's a request for a minimum deck setback. So with the minimum, or with the lower standards dimensionally, for the lot area, the width and the setbacks, those make the lot areas much smaller. So by having smaller lot areas, the balance of the site is preserved as open space, meaning that we're able to have a project where the minimum open space goes from 25% up to 40%, which includes the area around the creek in the southwest part of the site, as well as the wetland areas and some of the perimeter open space areas. The last item that we want to note about the site that is different than the preliminary planned development district is some of the architecture is a little bit more refined and finished. Some of the house models that are proposed at the final PDD, they have more brick on them than they had at preliminary PDD. One of the changes is that the homes that are presented for final PDD, they have the brick to the belt, which means the masonry to the first-floor ceiling line, including on the walkout elevations. Also, I had emailed the Planning Commissioners earlier this evening, just to update the Planning Commission on a meeting that we had with the applicants in April. We had a meeting between township staff and the applicants, and three of our trustees, so it was less than a quorum. And just to talk about some questions that we had about the architecture and the site design. Some of it was about the amount of brick on the homes, some of it was about the separation distances and the side yard setbacks, and also, some of it was about the front-entry garages versus the side-entry garages. The front-entry garages are proposed for all 51 units. Some of the nearby developments have side-entry garages, so we had a discussion about that. We also had a minor discussion about that at the January 8th meeting, when there was a slide presented with some of the front-entry versus the side-entry in the area. And then also, I've spoken with the Township Supervisor and Chair Zuber about communication that they had last week about discussing some of the architectural elevations as well. So that's just an update on some of the communications that we've had recently offline about some of the architecture, both with the applicant and with staff and officials, just to update on some of the conversations and some of the topics that we've talked about. So to wrap up our report here, our recommendation is that the final PDD, we recommend approval, and we recommend approval of the preliminary site plan on the subject parcel, as provided in the planned development district agreement and the planned documents, subject to the modifications that are noted in our letter for the building elevations and the PDD agreement. There were just some items that we had requested in terms of noting things on the plan, to have the elevations of the masonry to the first-floor ceiling line and the elevation. So I think we've gotten some updates from the applicant that we're in the process of reviewing. We'll just want to make sure on those elevation sheets that those are noted. So with that, we're completing our report here, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Patrick, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
All right.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Do you have anything to add, sir?
Hello, good evening. Mike Knowles with the Umler Group, representing MI Homes this evening. David Straub senses regrets. He had a medical issue he had to deal with, so he won't be with us tonight. Thank you, Mr. Sloan. You did a great job of sort of recanting some of the, recasting some of the topics that we discussed in our last six meetings that we had on this particular project. This is meeting seven. And I won't belabor it or be redundant with what Mr. Sloan has already stated, but there are two main points that I would like to show, just some pictures here tonight, to address Commissioner Cruz's request from the last meeting, and also Chair Zuber's request from the last meeting. So next slide, please, Mr. Sloan. So as Patrick pointed out, the layout has not changed, with one main exception, which you'll see on the next slide. Also, the planned features haven't changed. Remember, we are, our PDD Public Benefits revolves around sustainability and preservation of the natural features. The concept is not to increase the density or increase the total unit count, but is to keep it the same, compliant with the master plan, the 51 units that are permitted by right, but to have more open space. 40% open space, preserve trees, preserve creeks, less impervious area, more stormwater management area. And that obviously makes the houses clustered and smaller, the lots smaller, which is the reason for the setbacks. It's a trade-off between open space and, but without increasing the overall density. So that's what we talked about in the prior meetings, and that our final PDD is consistent with our preliminary PDD. But for one notable change, next slide, please. That's the passing lane. Commissioner Cruz, you reminded me a couple of times about the XL deceleration lane. I think we had a 50-foot taper lane last time you saw this in front of you. You can see here the acceleration/deceleration lane is now 640 feet. It gives cars that are slowing down, so eastbound Ford Road, they'll be able to pull off into a lane and slow down to make a right turn into the development. Also, we have a 650-foot-long passing lane. As we mentioned in prior meetings, we had no preference whether it was a passing lane or a turn lane. Both of them require the same amount of pavement. There's not a benefit to the applicant one way or the other. The difference between the two is when you have a passing flare, such as the one shown here, is that the primary traffic will not change their lanes unless there is a car turning. So they're going to be staying right down that center line primarily, unless there's a car turning in, and then they're going into the new lane. Whereas if you have a dedicated passing lane, then you're changing your trajectory to move around the passing lane and back. So that was the, that was the big change in configuration. Everything else is as you have seen it. And then the other request, Chair Zuber and some of the others asked us to look at doing better on the architecture. Next slide, please, Mr. Sloan. So you've seen a couple of these. This is, this is one of the new ones. MI Homes designed two new houses with multiple elevations. This is the first one, the Ashford. You'll see it has the brick to the belt, as Patrick indicated, and those are going to be the same for all of the houses. That's the masonry all the way up to the first-floor ceiling line. You'll see there are a lot of fine architectural elements. There's the corbels at the top of the columns in the, in the entryway. You see soldier courses on all of the windows and window sills, as well as over the garages. You see various pitches of roofs on the gables with some hip roofs. You see very little siding in this particular elevation, and you see some, some nice accents. And I think with the, one of the things that we did as a result of your direction in prior meetings was to have decorative garage doors required for all of the homes, and we've shown those here in this, in this particular rendering. Next slide, please, Mr. Sloan. So this one, we don't have all the renderings done. We have the architecture done. You can see the front elevation in the upper right-hand corner. But these are some other homes that MI Homes builds in Michigan, and so they're, they're going to be the same elevations that you see on the left side of the house, if you will. I didn't have photographs yet because it's new architecture with the front entry. What I wanted you to see, you know, the two-story grand entrances, mix of stone and masonry, soldier courses, hip roofs, gables, decorative siding. In this case, it's shake. I think they did a nice job. It's, it's hard to see it without having a photograph, but I think they did a nice job of taking the shakes from the nested gable and then putting it over the top of where the garage is there. That's going to be a fantastic-looking house, and again, with the decorative garage doors. This is the same house, the Windsor, with two different elevations, so you can see it has a very different flavor, depending on which elevation you go to. Next slide, please, Mr. Sloan. So these are the houses that you've seen before, but one thing you'll note is that the Hampton was eliminated. So this was one we had some discussion on, with the strange side elevation, with the long, shallow, weird roof, is gone. And so what we're, we've kept the Aspen and the Magnolia, and I've just added a couple of additional elevations so that you could see it. MI Homes had built it as their model in one of the neighborhoods, and that's the one you see with the glass door on the garage. Obviously, that is not the decorative door, that is just a sales model. So I wanted to show you, you know, a couple different flavors that you can get. Same house, the bottom, you see the Aspen. One's got more of a prestigious entrance, and one's got more of a sit-on-your-front porch, enjoy-the-neighborhood type of look to it, yet it's the same house. I think that's the last slide I really wanted to show tonight, yes. So I'm here to answer any and all of your questions. I hope we can continue to count on your support for this, this project. It's come a long way. It's changed quite a bit over the last 14 months, I guess, that we've been working on it, and hope to have your support again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles. Anybody from the audience want to speak about this project? Please, sir, come on up. Please tell us your name and address for the record.
Yes, Joel Keon, 50712 Southford. First of all, I want to thank the Commissioners for their, their work for the community and the planning of all these different, different developments for us. I have four concerns related to this particular PDD that I would like to speak to. First of all is to the subject that was at hand, really. I think I recall a Commissioner saying, "They're just a little plain." And when I look at the character and nature of the proposed PDD, and I look at the planning that the Township has done, this particular PDD would seem to be out of character with that corner. I think fundamentally, it might come from the approach attempt where the housing is being proposed at about 2/3 the value of its next nearest neighbors. And I think that's resulting in, you know, quite a bit of different character. I'm concerned about that for two reasons. Number one, I don't know if it really fully follows the intent of Canton and closing out the development of that corner, but also because of just overall public benefit as being talked about. If we're not maximizing the tax base there, we may be losing opportunity. That ties to my second point, where we're talking about public benefits, and while I continue to commend the Umler Group and Mr. Knowles for proposing 40% open space, the reality is that benefits principally the homeowners who will purchase those properties. The benefit to the rest of the community is rather minor. And so I continue to encourage the Commission and the Umler Group to consider something that would benefit both the residents of that community and the community at large. When these residents want to do something other than walk, their next nearest park is Patriot Park. They can actually walk to it by crossing through Parkside South and then to Parkside North, and there's an access path through Parkside North to them. I would encourage us to look for public benefits, such as a, a development contribution to Patriot Park, for the benefit of their own residents in this development, and then truly for the community. Two other items that I remain very concerned about, one is that I still think we're missing something from the traffic study. I think we have all enjoined together through the course of conversation, had concerns about the Ford Road traffic. And they love to use the language of turns, and they, they seem to analyze the next nearest intersections, and then those, those, the traffic just seems to dissipate. But I think with just a measure of common sense, we know that that traffic is not going to dissipate. We know that that traffic, the largest proportion of it, will be headed east. Why? The nearest services are far to the west in Ann Arbor. North and south on Napier, it's an unconstructed road. It becomes very, very potholed and difficult to navigate in the off-seasons. Even south on Ridge Road, Cherry Hill Village has not yet built out substantial services. So we are driving, we know a large portion of that traffic, put a ratio on it if you wish, will be headed east to down along the Charter Academy, which has traffic challenges we've talked about, and through the Canton Center Ford Road intersection. Now, why is that material? Many of you probably have loved ones that use that intersection. In the MDOT study, that intersection was the second worst intersection in the entire boulevarding project. However, the only change proposed to date on that intersection is to put backer boards on the signals. Again, I think common sense would tell us that backer boards are not going to make a substantial enough difference to that intersection. Its crash rate is 186% of the typical. Aggroity was 237%. So it's not much better. Fourth concern is around the electrical infrastructure reliability, which is interesting to me that we're going to talk about that coming up in the agenda yet tonight, as we, we begin to ponder bringing more and more electric cars and an infrastructure. At the, post the review meeting for the changing of the zoning, Township Planner Sloan reached out to DTE, and he asked them about the reliability in the area. There have been over a dozen power outages in that corner of Canton to those residents over the past couple of years. And yet again, last night, there was another 4,000 Canton residents were impacted. There was no weather event. We still lack sufficient reliability there. And unfortunately, the response to Commissioner Sloan was, was disingenuous in a form letter that said, "Well, without a development plan, we really can't comment." So I would encourage us, in summary, to be thoughtful about this, to take the time to meaningfully engage with MDOT, if we need to exercise the Township Board to get involved, if we need to exercise our representatives to truly do something about these traffic concerns that we all share. And I would encourage the Township Planning Commission to hold DTE accountable, now that we do have a PDD, to answer the question, can you reliably provide service to these new homeowners, much less the existing ones? And so for that reason, I would ask the Township Planning Commission to defer action on this PDD until these items can be addressed.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Last meeting, we, for, that was the public hearing, me and my neighbor, we never got letters, so we were unaware of what happened. But from what I've seen in the previous meeting, the entrance has changed now to be closer to Napier. Am I seeing that right? Because it used to be further over.
Yeah, I can speak to that. It used to be farther to the east, and what took place was that there's a wetland here in the northeast part of the site, so in preserving this wetland here along Ford Road in the northeast part of the site, the applicant shifted the driveway westward.
Okay. Because yeah, my, I, just personally, my driveway is during a normal, normal day, 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon, we're waiting 10 minutes just to get out of our driveway. So now that's moving it closer, that's going to make it even tougher, and with the, we usually get the lights that space out the westbound, but the eastbound, the closest light is Prospect, and it just gets car, 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 just nonstop. And then also those, what's that, the de-acceleration, acceleration lanes, now that's going to cut away from our, my property a little bit, it's going to cut away from my neighbors. And why are we getting penalized for this that we don't want?
Those will be in the, in the right-of-way, not in your property, just so you know.
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way, yeah. They can't take your property.
Well, I mean, as part of, I know we have the...
But there's, there's a right-of-way that Ford Road, that, that, the, the state owns the right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but it's still kind of like our, you know, we cut it, we take care of it and all that.
But you don't own it, just for the record.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I understand that. The, I can't think of what it's called, but still, it's still affecting us, and now we have that lane to deal with, with people passing other cars, now trying to pull out our driveways. It's, it's a mess. It's going to be a mess. But yeah, I mean, there was just an accident two weeks ago, right, right at the intersection there, a four-car. That was pretty bad. And I mean, there was just a lot there, a lot, a lot of traffic. But otherwise, other quite, or where am I? But I mean, so like with this now, they, like would they entertain like a, a center lane instead, and then kind of pull it out of, you know, their, their easement, instead of us homeowners who, you know, don't want this? Or something along those lines, just, you know, we, we really don't want this, but we know it's going to happen. So I don't know if that might be an option or something like that down the way. And it's something I see too now with the, the R2 zoning, which was, there's a lot width minimum of, was it 100, 120 feet, something like that? Now, why are these going to be an exception, being 70 feet wide? They, I mean, they're not following that, that part of the plan. So then, you know, should there be less houses a part of it, and to keep that, that minimum lot size? And another thing, like an ask that me and my neighbors were kind of curious on for this would be to, and I talked with Mr. Knowles about this the last time I was out, I was here, was to potentially get a sewer line out to Ford Road, so that we can, in the future, tap into it if our septic's fail. Because I got one neighbor who's is getting ready to fail, and it would be a good idea to tie in. So that could be a potential saver and, you know, better for the environment and all that. So I just, you know, wanted to throw that out there. Can I take it there, they're extending the berm all the way across from Parkside? Okay.
Sir, you've, what, talked more than three minutes, just for the record, but thank you very much.
I'm new at this, I'm nervous.
That's okay, you did great, thank you. I... That's okay, you did great, thank you. I can understand that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Awesome. All right. Mr. Knowles, can you, can you please speak to the comment about the value of those homes versus the surrounding homes? Do you have any...
Yes. So, Mr. Kin makes a good point. The Westridge Development is a beautiful development. I feel very fond of it since I built it when I was still with Toll Brothers. But those are million-dollar houses, and these are going to be six-fifty, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar houses. So I don't know that the two-third statistic that he quoted is quite right, but these are comparable houses. So, I mean, the main difference between a house in Westridge and a house at this location is lot size. We've got the same brick requirements, the same monotony requirements, and the primary difference is having a hundred-foot lot and a side-entry garage versus having a seventy-foot lot. But the same architectural excellence, I think, that is shown in the Toll Brothers architecture at the Westridge Development is also shown at this MI Homes development here at the proposed development in front of you. So, yes, there is a difference in price. No, I wouldn't say that this is exactly affordable, although aren't we also trying to find more ways to have more affordable housing and smaller lots? So I don't know that because they're not a million dollars doesn't necessarily disqualify them as being candidates. What they look like, do they fit the area, is, I think, the more important question. And I think it's a question that we've, we've worked with the township and their consultants quite a bit, as Mr. Sloan mentioned. We had a design charrette, you know, to talk about some of the architecture and some of the things that we could change to make it fit the area a little bit better, too. And, you know, just as Mr. Zanka also mentioned, you know, he and I did have conversations, I think about a year ago. That sewer line that he asked about is in the plan. There is a sewer stub that goes out to Ford Road that would be available for Canton Township residents to be able to utilize at some point if there were a need for it. Traffic's always been an issue. I think both Mr. Kin and Mr. Zanka, as well as this planning commission and the township board and other residents who have spoken at the various public meetings, traffic is an issue. And I don't know that this fifty-one unit development is going to make or break the traffic issue in Canton Township at large. The question is, are we mitigating for the additional traffic that we're bringing in? And I would submit to you that we are, because we've been asked to do two things that's not supported, that is not supported by the traffic study, but makes sense. And the first one is, the passing lane is not warranted by the traffic study. And this planning commission and the township board said, you know, people travel fast down Ford Road, there are a lot of accidents on Ford Road, let's try to minimize that at a passing lane, so that people that are slowing down here aren't contributing to that. And we were also asked to add an acceler- deceleration lane. That's not required when you have a neighborhood this small tying into a street like Ford Road. But we did it. That's the six-hundred-and-fifty-foot acceleration-deceleration lane. It doesn't introduce a huge amount of additional cost to the developer to do that. Obviously, it's not free, but it's safer. It was the request of the township. It was the request of the bulk of the people that commented at the various public meetings that we've been here, was traffic. As far as DTE and MDOT go, you know, DTE and MDOT are who they are. We are submitted to MDOT. They're going to have their say. I can assure you that this acceleration-deceleration lane, although it's not warranted by the traffic study, it does meet all of the MDOT requirements for an acceleration-deceleration lane, so they will approve it. As far as DTE, that's how they operate. What they hear when you ask them a question about outages, and it's the same all over. We do developments all around southeast Michigan. Unless you submit an application to them for service, what they're hearing is, do you have capacity to serve another development? Not, when are you going to get a grip on all your current problems, the grid nationwide, you know, when a storm comes through, when it's very hot, and there's a high demand with air conditioning, as we move to a more sustainable energy sources, electric car, electric vehicles, solar panels in the houses, when there's more of a demand on our electrical grid, there are going to be challenges. And a development like this isn't going to solve that challenge. What we can do is, if there is, and I've run into this several times, when we do submit to DTE, if they don't have the capacity, they will charge us to upgrade their transformer. Maybe it's two miles away so that they have the capacity. But it won't add any additional reliability to the existing grid at large. And so those were the issues I took notes upon. I hope I answered your question, Chair Zuber.
Yes, thank you.
I have a tendency to go on a little bit.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'm going to ask Commissioner Watkins for his thoughts and questions.
Thanks so much, through the chair. So, one of the things that's important to me is, you know, the neighbors to the north, as well as to the east, I think we understand those concerns. And Patrick, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think there are any plans at the county level to pave Napier from the south, from Cherry Hill all the way through to Ford Road. I don't think there's a plan in place. So we know that there will never, ever be traffic in the soon and near future that's going to come from the south to development. And we understand that. And I think that's a problem, in that all of the traffic is going to come from the east or from the west. I do think, though, that we've asked the developer to go back. They've gone back, and they've made some considerations. And this development is one of many that is going to come to this table that meets the need, that meets the criteria set forth by the body. I don't have an issue. I do want to ask, though, forgive me, from the design firm, the wetland that sits to the east, tell me, yeah, tell me, and the entrance that was moved, how, from the original plan, how far did we move that back to the east, excuse me, how far did we move that entrance from the original plan?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, it was approximately where Lot Three is now.
I think I see Lot Three.
Yes, right there, right? So it was a double-loaded road.
Is that, what, ninety feet?
Yes. So, well, so the roadway itself is sixty feet. And then, what I mean by double-loaded is houses on both sides of the road. So the depth of the lot, so a seventy-foot-wide lot by one hundred and eighty, two hundred feet, whatever we have in there for the depth of the lot. So you'd have basically a two-hundred-foot-deep lot, two-hundred-foot-deep lot, and a sixty-foot, so two-hundred-and-sixty-foot corridor. And that's why I say the road itself was lined up approximately with Lot Number Three.
So we did not lose a unit, though, from the development, did we?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay, all right.
It's always been fifty-one units proposed.
Got it. No further questions. Thank you, Ben, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes. I have no issues. I mean, you did what you could with the lot. You put the spacing in and got what you could out of it. I do have a question. Only question I have is something simple, not related. But you have here as the owners are three trusts. Are the trusts the owners of the property? Is this like a development group, or it's just money that you pull together to get this development going?
No, thank you, Commissioner Lee. So MI Homes has a contract to purchase with the trust. So the trusts are the heirs of the property, the historical property owners, and they have the property up for sale. MI Homes has a contract with the owners of the property.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have no other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things that I'd like to say that I was pretty impressed with, the, something in the attic for solar panels, which I don't think I've ever seen here, and then also for electric vehicles. And I was pretty excited to see that that was something you guys thought to put in there.
Yes, it was actually at the request of Trustee Snyderman. We were talking about, you know, several aspects of this project. And because the project sort of relies upon preserving natural features, the sustainability aspects, he requested that we pre-wire for electric charging stations in the garage and pre-wire for solar panels. One of the largest costs is the panels keep coming down in cost. One of the biggest problems is retrofitting homes to be able to wire for it, because you end up having to tear up drywall throughout the rest of your house to run a new feed up into the attic, when a simple matter of adding the plug with the right voltages, the right wiring to those areas is really all that needs to happen. And while the house is open and rough-framed, it's just simple to do. It's an easy concession.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. And then I'd just like to comment, I don't want Canton to be all million-dollar homes. So I agree, I'm not sure six-hundred, six-hundred-and-fifty is what one calls affordable, but unfortunately, it seems to be the cost of homes right now.
Yeah, I remember, so I've been doing this for a long time. I'm fifty-six years old, and I've been in the business for thirty-plus years. And I don't know how you build a house under four-hundred-thousand dollars anymore. It's almost impossible. And some of the houses that you do see that are less than that, most of the time it's multifamily, and you can do it with a multifamily. But a single-family detached product with the cost of the bricks and sticks, the land, and the infrastructure, it's really, really a tough putt.
But the good thing is that when we build subdivisions like this, people move into them from lower-priced houses, and those become available then for people to start their lives in.
They absolutely do. The home I'm in is not the home I started in. So it does give people chances, for sure.
Yeah. Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Weber?
First of all, I want to agree with Commissioner Egenberger about...
Can you hear him?
That might be one you have to hold down. Is the green light on?
Nope. It's red light up here, so I think that means it's on. It's just not very hot like mine. Oh, maybe.
I want to agree with Commissioner Egenberger about the housing overall in Canton. I agree a hundred percent. We don't want to see million-dollar homes all over Canton. It's nice how that you are. I mean, all you got to do is go to our neighbors to the north in Pluma and see what that's like. Quite honestly, if my family and I were looking to move into Canton now, we'd probably send the Ford. But that's another issue for another day. I have to take issue with you a little bit on the traffic study. We've seen a number of developments lately. Traffic studies come in, and I don't know who the traffic engineer was or who it was, but having a traffic study predict one thing and project what reality is in two different places. Ford Road is a mess, all up and down, depending upon, no matter where you're talking about, where it's fully developed or in this area, what we're talking about. I was one of the ones who wanted, I actually wanted both. I wanted the decel lanes, and I wanted a left-hand turn lane. I still believe in the left-hand turn lane more than here. What we don't want to do, you said the report doesn't demonstrate that we need that, but we also don't need to exacerbate it. I know from personal experience, traffic coming from the west, coming over that ridge, it comes down the Napier Road, that's where the cars are flying through there. And that's another issue, I know, that maybe MDOT has to take up, or the county has to take up to slow traffic. I don't know that it'll ever happen. I foresee the situation that we're superior to, it's happening right now. There's some significant developments going on in Superior to the west of us. And, you know, it may not be five years, it may not be ten years, but it's coming. And I don't think there's a problem with thinking forward a little bit in addressing those issues. But nevertheless, it is what it is. And I think you used the phrase that DTE and MDOT are going to do what they're going to do. And you're correct in saying that. I just don't agree with it in how they address these needs. Just for the sake of argument, I don't really like how they've designed the proposed Boulevard project either. I think they could have taken it much further than what they have, but that's, yeah, that's another issue for another day. I know there's been discussion about the whole side-entry garage situation. It's a nice thing, I guess. I know I said in the earlier meeting that I don't really like looking at the garage as the first thing I look at when I look at a house. That's how my own home is. I look at the garage first thing. It's right there, I want to see. But I don't think it's a killer as far as not having side-entry garages. It's a nice thing to have, but there's also downside to that. Correct me if I'm wrong, some of the engineers in the room probably requires, you're probably putting more concrete down.
Absolutely.
And one of the things we're trying to get away from in this township is more less paved surfaces in this area because of all the flooding issues and that's why. Parking lots are a good example in that we way overdesigned the parking lots for the commercial needs in this township. And we weren't unique. A lot of people did that. But I don't, again, talking about exacerbating problems, I don't necessarily think... Turning a garage ninety degrees, that would require more concrete ninety or fifty-one times. I don't think the benefit is worthy of the detriment. So I'm not going to die on that, though, so to speak. But I do appreciate that you did the decorative garage doors. I think that by itself is a big improvement. I appreciate like the one that looks like the Cary House type of design. That's nice. I guess my comment to the residents who don't want to see this development, I'm sure you don't, I'm sure you would have preferred this property stay vacant forever and ever. That's probably not reality, though. There's very few, very little open space left in Canton that can be developed. And somebody was going to buy this property at some point, and somebody was going to develop. It wasn't going to be a personal home. I'd say I agree with it, or like it, or anything like that, but that's the way it is, and that's the way we're set up in this township, in this state or the country as far as property rights go. Obviously, we're not going to approve something that's dangerous to the community or a huge detriment. All we can do is try to do, keep things under control a little bit to try and make it so that it's not a hindrance on the community. And I think, I think Mr. Knowles' group has done a fine job as far as trying to minimize the negative impacts to this area. You know, you're right, Napier Road's already getting paved, I mean, at least not in our lifetime. But there's stuff we can do about that. I think it's evolved overall.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster?
I'm not sure if my mic, oh, can you hear me? I don't want to repeat everything that has just been said. I largely agree with Commissioner Weber and with Commissioner Egenberger. I don't want to see Canton Township full of million-dollar homes. And I also agree with Commissioner Weber that at some point, this land was going to be developed. I think it's our job to make sure that we do the best that we can in protecting the character of Canton and making sure that we are providing nice places in the community for people to live. And I think that this development does that. I do like the elevations and the changes to the garage much better than the previous design. I am very concerned about traffic. I drive that way on Ford Road, headed towards M14 all the time, and it is a disaster at certain areas of the day, or certain times of the day. So I am concerned about traffic. One of the things that I've learned on the township board and as part of our roads task force is that MDOT usually makes moves when there is a and as part of our, our Roads Task Force is that MDOT usually makes moves when there is a problem. They don't move before there's a problem. So unfortunately, that is how MDOT reacts. I do think that, you know, there is, and it has been brought up, a strain on infrastructure, electrical infrastructure in many communities. I think we see that when we have the large power outages. And, you know, I think it is incumbent on us as commissioners, as elected officials, to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to bring DTE to the table and bring MDOT to the table and say that we need upgrades to our infrastructure in this community. And I think we've tried to do that in a number of ways. And, I mean, hopefully we'll see it soon with Ford Road Boulevard project. But like Commissioner Weber says, as traffic heads west, about safety west of Sheldon and Canton Center Road. But I think we, we can do that. I do think this development has been responsive to the asks of the, the Planning Commission and the Township Board.
You need a new battery.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Cruz.
So, Patrick, for PDDs, how do you define the public benefit? That's public benefit for Canton Township or the residents?
I can bring up the ordinance itself here. It's got direct language on that. Find it here. Okay, so I'll just kind of summarize the definition of a definite benefit. It's a, it's a clear, explicit, substantial and ascertainable benefit which will benefit the users of the development or the residents of the township as a whole. Definite benefits include, but are not limited to, preservation of natural resources and natural features, preservation of historical and architectural features of a significant quality and quantity, significant reduction of non-conforming uses or structures, and the presence or preservation of aesthetically pleasing structures of a, of a significant quantity and quality. Some additional definite benefits always include architectural design assurances which was, which result in creation of a sense of place and community within the development and benefits the community as a whole. This can be done through defined design guidelines, pattern books, model sheets and other similar methods of architectural control. Another definite benefit is preservation and enhancement of existing natural resources and natural features on the site and provision of open space which is usable and accessible. There are some other areas that are bullet pointed in the ordinance that a definite benefit may include. One of the following doesn't always, a lot of times it's site-specific. One of them is provision of public and private parks with appropriate improvements, including walking paths and playfields. In this case, they have both internal walking paths and sidewalks along the frontage, including along the frontage of Ford Road to connect a sidewalk gap to the property to the east. There's a sidewalk that's proposed to make the connection. And then along Napier Road, there's actually a pedestrian bridge over the creek that's proposed. Other definite benefits include construction of new trails onsite and missing links to the overall trail system. In this case, there's no trail gaps, but there are sidewalk gaps that they're filling. Another definite benefit is provision for regional stormwater detention. In this case, they'll have to build their detention bond according to the county standards. Whether and to what degree they would exceed the minimum would have to be something that's quantified and qualified by county engineers. And then there's also some definite benefits for infrastructure capacities for water, sewer, roadways, et cetera. Some additional definite benefits for design amenities as well as public art. So those are the ones that the ordinance lists. It's kind of a long list and it's not exhaustive either. So there could be other things that are definite benefits that are not necessarily on the list, but there may be something that's project-related and community-related where a project may fit a definite benefit, not listed in the ordinance, but considered by the Planning Commission and the board to be definite benefits.
So like Patriot Park, for example, that, that's probably the nearest park location? I mean, that's a true public community benefit. Is that enforceable by a PDD?
Depending on what was proposed by the applicant and considered by the township. So if it's, in some cases, definite benefits have been off-site. And those are, those are some cases where the applicant would have to, have to offer them and we would have to consider them in terms of how they fit with the project and the area as a whole. The, the park that is at Ford and Ridge, the, the ZB West Nature Area, that's the one that we had looked at last month at northwest corner of Ford and Ridge. That's about three-quarters of a mile to the east down the road. There are some sidewalk connections, especially on the north side of Ford Road. The sidewalk on the south side of Ford Road, there are some gaps there. The sidewalk along the frontage of Harvest Arbor will help. Connecting to the development to the east will help. But there are some gaps on the south side of Ford that would have yet to be filled, some of which are on existing sites that may or may not even want the sidewalk in front of the sites. But over time, we hope to have those gaps filled in.
So, speaking on sidewalks, like for instance, to the east, there's that gap. Why wasn't, why wasn't that developer required to put that whole frontage so, like this little gap right there? And further west to Napier, if you go to the corner? No, I, I get the requirement, you're putting it along the frontage of your property, but how do you, like, what is that, Superior Township? I mean, if they wanted to connect to that, I mean, they'd have to go across to connect to it. Why not take it to the edge of the road at least? So that you can make a true connection if they decide to put a walk, you know? It's almost a deterrent to put a walk right after this, you know? I mean, is that the ordinance requirement to go, strictly property line?
Yeah, the ordinance requirement is for the property line. I've had developments before where we've tried to get a sidewalk to go from the property to the road for a future connection. And I forget which county it was in, but the county had basically, would not permit that because there was no connecting crosswalk on the opposite side of the road.
You gotta build a receiving ramp. But it just seems like it should be a requirement. I mean, at least to get to the, to the roadway. Now, it's, it's like a little gap that, you know, it's a future project for Superior, I guess, but it's just not a... I mean, it's not encouraging a connection by stopping it right at the property line.
Yeah, and one of the thoughts would be that we're not sure if Superior Township wants sidewalks there or if they would want that connection made there. Working across a jurisdiction as well as across a county, I don't know why they wouldn't want them there. It's just one of those unknowns.
But even if it were Canton Township on the west side, this is the requirement not to go to the road, is that correct?
Yeah, if this were Canton Township on the other side, we would probably have tried to push to get a connecting and a crosswalk across the road, knowing that the roads are, even though it's Wayne County, we've done it before. Arbor Glen at the northwest corner of Warren and Ridge, that's one where there was a crosswalk that was done as part of that development where, in dealing with Wayne County, and there was a signalized or a stop sign there. So that was able to take place. I think that was the last one that came to mind.
The last point I have, can you pan to the east a little? Is this the development plan?
This is the site layout plan.
You go to, I think it's the next page, the development plan? So that sanitary stub that you mentioned, it's, it's right on the west side of Antrim Way. So, you know, a better design and a true public benefit would be to extend that sanitary across the frontage. And I've done that for, as a requirement as an engineer in different municipalities. And like you said, it enables residents to connect to sanitary by doing that and getting, getting rid of that septic, septic fields as an option. But that's not a requirement for the township to put that sanitary across the frontage like that, especially in a PDD?
That's something we'd have to ask our engineering division about in terms of the sanitary. A lot of times we don't require anything more in a PDD than what would be required by engineering. But if there is anything that was required in addition to what engineering requires, those could be considered definite benefits if they go above and beyond the norm.
Exactly. Those residents could not hook up to that because that's... They would have to have an extension of the main with a manhole. You can't connect into a manhole like that. So that is a future expansion stub, but you still, these residents can't do anything with it, in other words. So I guess, you know, if you could check with our engineering department on that. Because it serves two purposes. It's, it's really, it's a true public benefit. It expands your infrastructure. And it doesn't put, you know, the cost completely on Canton Township. That's all I got.
Okay. We'll ask them, we'll ask our engineering division about that. And then while we are going through some of these items, the resident at 50712 Salford had passed me a note and told me that the "Welcome to Canton" sign on their property is one of the reasons that the connecting sidewalk was not included. So I can show you on an aerial photo what we're talking about here. So the red area, these red lines, they're somewhat representative of partial lines, they're not exact. So in the park side south at the northwest corner, they have a "Welcome to Canton" sign. You may have seen it driving by. Although some of the vegetation growth and on the subject property in the right-of-way kind of blocks the sign. But they have a "Welcome to Canton" sign and I think that was put where the sidewalk stub is west of the stub. So that may have been the reason why is to have that sign there instead of a sidewalk.
I thought that this project was proposing a welcome sign.
It is. There's currently a "Welcome to Canton" sign farther west of the boundary, or farther east of the boundary.
Welcome to Canton. Welcome to Canton again. We want to emphasize, you're welcome in Canton.
Welcome, welcome.
So you could build that walk with a, with a sign there? Is that right?
Or is the sign going to be demoed?
Yeah, if the sign is there, I think it would just be a matter of if it can be within the right-of-way farther north or if it could go around the sign farther to the south. That would just be something to be worked out between the adjacent homeowners association and the developer.
We really will have two "Welcome to Canton" signs in a row?
Yeah.
Okay. Very welcoming. Anything else, Commissioner Cruz?
All right. Yeah, thank you. I, I don't really have anything to add to what the other commissioners have said. I think that it looks like a nice development. I think that the, I like that you're planning for solar. I appreciate that. I appreciate that it's not a million-dollar community. So, good luck. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend approval of the Harvest Arbor Final Plan Development District and Preliminary Site Plan on parcel number 070-99-0002-702 as provided in the PDD agreement and planned documents subject to modifications to the elevations to have Mason read to the first-floor ceiling line on all elevations and modifications to the PDD agreement to the satisfaction of Township Plan Division staff and legal counsel.
Second.
All right, we have a, a, a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Egenberger, could you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz? Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber?
Yes. All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much and...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You bet. Next steps. Patrick, could you just outline those?
Sure. The next steps will be, the application will proceed to the Township Board of Trustees. They will consider the recommendation from the Planning Commission for the final PDD as well as the preliminary site plan. So that will be coming up on an upcoming board meeting, probably whatever the last meeting in May is. I think it's May 28th. So more than likely, it'll be at that meeting.
Thank you. All right.
That's correct. If the Township Board of Trustees approves the final PDD and the preliminary site plan, then the applicant proceeds through detailed engineering. And once the detailed engineering is finished and approved by the Engineering Division, Wayne County and any state requirements, then it returns to Planning Commission and Board for final site plan. At that point, all the fine details are, are completed as well as any conditions from preliminary site plan.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a good night. All right. Next item on our agenda is the Cherry Hill Preserve condominium variances. We're considering condominium, we're considering variances to the condominium ordinance for several parcels, also known as 39540 Cherry Hill Road. The property is located on the north side of Cherry Hill Road between lots in Canton Township's eastern boundary. The proposed use is a single-family development requesting a variance. I'm sorry, I got a little confused here. The proposed, proposed use is single-family residential development requesting a variance from section 82-124, section four and six B of the condominium ordinance to allow the non-boulevard cul-de-sac to have a diameter of less than 110 feet and be the only point of access to the proposed residential development pursuant to section 82-7 of the condominium ordinance. I feel like I'm going to seize. Patrick, could you please tell us more?
Sure, thank you. At the April 1st...
Thank you.
At the April 1st, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission recommended site plan approval for Cherry Hill Preserve to the Township Board of Trustees. At this point, the plan has not yet gone to the Board of Trustees because there are a couple of variance processes that the applicant has to go through. One of which is separate from the Planning Commission where the applicant is, is requesting wetland setback variances. And that goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals and that meeting will be this Thursday on May 9th. The proposal within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and the Board for variances are from two sections of the condominium ordinance. So in the zoning ordinance, if somebody applies for a variance, they go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is a different body. In the condominium ordinance, if someone applies for a variance from that ordinance, the procedure is for the applicant to go to the Planning Commission for a public hearing. And then the Planning Commission makes a recommendation on the variance and then the application proceeds to the Township Board for final action. And the two variances that the applicant is seeking, the first is, I'll rotate this, so north is up. The first variance is at the road. The condominium ordinance requires that if there's a cul-de-sac with only one entrance in and out, that it be boulevarded. And one of the issues with having a boulevarded cul-de-sac is that it doesn't quite... with having a boulevarded cul-de-sac is that, um, it doesn't quite align with Buckingham Road to the south. Buckingham Road to the south is a subdivision road and, uh, there's no boulevard there. So as it's designed, there's an alignment. If there's a boulevard, um, it would throw off the alignment a little bit. Uh, plus with, um, as narrow as the site is with the applicant doing the stormwater management in the southwest corner, um, and having to do that because there are a lot of wetlands elsewhere that the applicant doesn't want to fill. So between the location of the pond, the location of natural features, being able to get in the road and the narrowness of the site and being able to have a building envelope for a double loaded road, um, the applicant is proposing a non-boulevard cul-de-sac. Um, the, uh, we've talked to the fire department about, um, whether there's a, a distinction between boulevarded, non-boulevarded. And there's nothing in the fire code for this number of units that would require the cul-de-sac to be boulevarded. Uh, so we recommend that that, uh, variance be granted to allow the cul-de-sac as designed and without a boulevard. Um, generally, the last few years as we've been reviewing residential developments, we've been trying to discourage boulevarded entrances because, um, sometimes they're difficult to align. Sometimes people drive the wrong way up them and, and they're just a little bit more difficult to manage. So, um, like in the case of the previous development Harvest Arbor, um, we've requested developments when they can to try to have wider entrances so that if we need a left turn lane dedicated, we widen the pavement without putting a boulevard in the middle. Um, so, uh, that's just an aside in terms of how we've, how we've reviewed boulevards the last few years. Uh, the other variance that the applicant has proposed is, um, the cul-de-sac diameter. Um, the condominium ordinance requires a cul-de-sac diameter of a hundred and ten feet, uh, which is really wide. It's, it's probably more than what's necessary for, uh, fire trucks, garbage trucks, things like that. Um, this is, um, a variance that was approved a few years ago for this development by, uh, the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees. However, the previously granted variance has expired, so, uh, we're required to go through the process again. Um, on the cul-de-sac that's proposed, a diameter of eighty feet, uh, is proposed for the, the cul-de-sac diameter. And, um, one of the first things that we looked at in terms of whether that's a reasonable amount is, um, asking the fire marshal and checking with the fire code to see what the requirement is there. And according to the fire code, a minimum diameter of ninety-six feet is required. So consistent with the fire code requirements, our recommendation is that, um, that variance from a hundred and ten feet be granted, provided that it's at least ninety-six feet consistent with the fire code. Um, a couple of days ago, the applicants had emailed, uh, revised plan sheet that we didn't have time to get in the packet, but they did show on the plan sheet how they were able to widen that cul-de-sac to make it ninety-six feet in diameter. So, um, that was a good indication, uh, to show that making the ninety-six foot wide diameter was possible, um, on the site. I think, um, it just, um, with requiring a wider, uh, cul-de-sac, I think some of, uh, these units on the northeast may have gotten pushed a little bit farther to the northeast. And, um, where possible, some of these units, uh, may have been pushed west, but not so much as to, uh, push it farther into the wetland setback. So, um, I, and I think some of the units, some of these units are fairly deep. Uh, we see farther south, some of these units are almost square. And some of these units are pretty deep rectangles. So I think there can be, uh, space obtained by, um, making the units a little shallower and picking up the balance with the cul-de-sac diameter. So, um, those combined, I think, allowed the applicant to, um, raise that diameter to ninety-six feet. Um, so with that, our recommendation is, um, approval of the proposed variances to the condominium ordinance to permit the non-boulevard cul-de-sac, uh, road at, uh, for Cherry Hill Preserve to be, um, less than a hundred and ten feet in diameter at the cul-de-sac, uh, provided the cul-de-sac complies with the applicable fire code. Uh, that concludes our staff report and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, do I hear a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Egenberger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Excellent. The project sponsor here to speak? Okay. Anyone like to talk about this project? Um, could you go to the podium and tell us who you are and where you live?
Hi, my name is Alice Friend. I live at two oh four Redfield Court, which is right on the corner there.
Okay.
Across the street from this location. Um, and I don't know if this is the meeting to talk about the traffic here because that's about variances, right? Or can I just?
I think you can talk about whatever you want. You have three minutes.
Okay. Um, I've listened to the former folks talk about, um, traffic, um, concerns on Ford Road. Cherry Hill is like Ford Road now. It's getting worse and worse. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-eight, so I've seen a lot of change. And, um, when I'm pulling up to turn onto Buckingham, I'm praying nobody, that the short little passing lane that they have, which will be right in front of this, I'm hoping they see me because distracted drivers could ram me. And I'm concerned about the passing lane. Is that going to be increased if this goes into effect? I mean, it's very short.
I think you can say what you want and then Patrick can address your concerns after.
So that's one of my concerns. And, um, and then I heard you mention, uh, the benefit to the public as far as sidewalks to parks. I'd love to see where that is going to be here. Cause there's no parks. There's nothing over there.
Yeah, this is different from that.
This is very, yeah.
Yeah.
But, um, that those, my, my main concern is the traffic there and turning into my sub safely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Lee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Awesome. All right. Patrick, do you want to, um, address?
Uh, sure. Yeah. The, um, when we had looked at the, um, evaluation for the site, the, uh, proposal is, uh, detached condominiums. And under the existing zoning, I'm bringing it up here. Um, under the existing zoning for nineteen detached condominiums and, um, it was, uh, it's a permitted use, um, of single family residential detached. It's a permitted use by right in the R four district where, um, there weren't any, um, discretionary standards like with a planned development district or even a special land use. And so when we had looked at this for nineteen units, um, this wasn't, uh, the size or the type of development where, uh, we had recommended a traffic impact study. Um, our, our engineering division, when they looked at this and based on the previous approval, they said for this many units there and it's a permitted use by right, they didn't see where a traffic impact study would have been required. However, um, th- this is a county road on Cherry Hill Road and the applicant will be required to get a permit from Wayne County for any connection to the road. And if Wayne County sees any capacity issues where, um, there's a turn lane or any other improvements to the roadway based on capacity, then Wayne County has the authority to enforce those. Um, even if the applicants had a traffic study and it did show a warrant for something, the township of Canton would not have the authority to require an off-site improvement for, um, a development, especially a development for a single family residential detached condos where it's an approval by right and not like a planned development or, or something that's large where it's got a much more significant impact on the roadway network.
The, the difference between this project and the previous one is that the previous one is a planned, uh, planned unit development. We don't use that term here, but a PDD, which means they had to give us some definite benefits. Whereas this being a by right project, it means that, that they're allowed to do this without getting, giving us any sort of definite benefits. Hopefully that helps. Is there someone she can write to in Wayne County?
Uh, sure. Um, I don't have a, a specific, uh, name, but I would say the Wayne County Department of Public Services. Um, they have the department on their website. So if it's Wayne County Department of Public Services, I usually encourage people to contact, um, their DPS or Department of Public Services about any road, um, issues, capacity issues or, uh, permits that they may be reviewing in the future. Um, residents can call them and they can probably route you to, uh, the right people in the traffic division. Yes.
All right. So, uh, Commissioner Cruz, what's your thought?
Again, what, the sidewalk, why are we falling short to the property line? And I just noticed this. And extending to the property line. Every time we do that, that's a deterrent for our sidewalk network master plan.
Yeah, I'll have to ask, um, our engineering division why that is, whether that is because, uh, whether there's natural features there or whether there's a topographic issue there. Because what the applicant may be designing is, um, providing additional right of way to the county. I think there is going to be additional right of way required by the county for those improvements. And I think the question is whether they have the topography or whether there's a impediment with the natural features that prevent the sidewalk going all the way to the lot line. But we'll check with our engineers on that to see if that's something that can be reconciled without impacting the property to the west. Because I think the property to the west, their lot line may be pretty close to the road. So, um, I don't think that they're going to be able to do any kind of grading or, or impact where the person to the west is impacted unless they get an easement or otherwise get permission.
Well, that's right of way. So they don't have a say in it. Just like Ford Road right of way. Um, so I, I don't really see a reason. It's not their property and they wouldn't need to grant permission to extend that walk. It'd be Wayne County.
Um, I can bring up an aerial and?
I just looked at it. Um, I mean, there's a bunch of brush, but it's nothing that can't be cleared.
I see on Google Street View that there's like a fence and there's kind of a mounded area at the property line, it appears. Cause there's a utility pole there. So I'm assuming that's the property line.
Well, that would be on their property then. Should be taken down.
Yeah. So what I think, um, so what the issue may be is, um, it might be hard to see, but here's the red line of the existing right of way. And, um, there's quite a bit of distance from the front of this house to the existing right of way. And on the plan here, the proposed right of way, the applicants are going to have to dedicate a certain amount of property to Wayne County. And so the sidewalks will be set back farther. And looking at the orientation of the house, the sidewalk would be almost even with the, uh, be, be a little farther south of the front of the house. So I think the, the sidewalk will end up probably about where the cursor is here, after all the right of ways dedicated to the county. And, um, the property to the west for this homeowner, if they haven't dedicated the right of way, they might butt up into private property with the right of way.
But there's the property line. They're not on the adjacent property. So they're dedicating the right of way, build the walk right up to the property line, you know? I, it, that doesn't make sense to me. Um.
Yeah. The only reason, the only reasons I've seen before, why not to do it, other than putting in a welcome sign?
Well, you're guessing, Patrick.
Yeah.
The, the applicant's not here and can't provide that answer. The ordinance requires that frontage walk, put it in. You know, that's, I guess that's.
There's a natural feature there.
Agreed. Agreed. Uh, I bring this up because I'm big on connectivity and deterrence like this are deterrents to connecting our sidewalks. So I think, you know, without the applicant here, I mean, we don't have an answer. We're guessing at this point why didn't extend the walk and why we didn't make them extend the walk.
Yeah. And that's, and that's something that would be reviewed by the engineering division because when they look at it and they look at the topography, a lot of times they'll have people go right to the lot line. But there are other times where if, if there's a steep drop off between the edge of the lot line or the edge of the sidewalk and where the neighbor's lot line is, and they physically can't do it because they can't go on the neighbor's property and there's a steep grading issue, um, that's something they'll have to review when they get to engineering to see if that's possible without the cooperation of the adjacent neighbor, especially if there's grading involved that's going to impact the neighbor. So ultimately it's something our engineering division looks at. I mean, we'll look at it on the plan, make sure that they do it. They have to do it, but?
Good.
Any kind of exemptions where if they do less than the full frontage, that's something that the engineering division looks at to see if there's a reason why they can't do it based on the physical features.
Patrick, will we be seeing this again for site plan? Or is this a? We're just, we're basically considering, um, variances to the condo ordinance right now. So will this be coming back to us?
Um, let me take a look and see what the?
Well, for example, you said that ninety-six foot is fire code. This plan doesn't show the ninety-six feet, correct?
Correct.
Right. It showed the, it showed the eighty feet.
So, you know, Dawn's got a good point. I, I'm not inclined to improve, approve anything without the current plan in front of us. If it's just a variance we're approving, I guess it's okay. But we don't have the current plan in front of us. Correct?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Yeah. Let me just look to see if it's, um, if it's going to be back at final here. Okay. So it looks like at the April first meeting, there was the preliminary site plan was approved. So the application will have to return here for a final site plan. So even if the variances are approved, the planning commission will see this again when it comes to final site plan where there'll be more, there should be more grading details, more engineering, more, more finished details.
Okay.
I hope the project sponsor comes then so they can answer questions.
Got to show up.
I'm telling you.
It's very important to me.
Wow.
All right.
All right. So any thoughts on the variances? Are you, are you, did you just, did I hear you say, Commissioner Cruz, that you're uninclined to, you're okay with it despite the fact that the drawings don't show?
The final site plan's coming back before the planning commission. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're granting a variance that they can show us in the next set of drawings.
Uh, yeah, and I'm okay with that.
They still have to prove it.
Yeah.
And when the preliminary site plan goes to the Board of Trustees, it's going to have the updated cul-de-sac. And if the variances are approved, the plans are not going to the board until those variances are approved. So by the, when the board gets the preliminary site plan, they'll have to have everything there, meeting all the conditions from the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals if they have them.
The last thing I forgot to mention, uh, the last time it came before us, the water main, it's a dead end. It's a long dead end. And typically Eagle does not accept or approve something that long as a dead end, uh, because it could, it'll stagnate water. I wouldn't want to live here with, with a long dead end. And if there, if there's a break in the line, you can't fight a fire. So, uh, the water main is not looped. But if the fire marshal approved this, obviously he's looked at it, then, you know, it's his decision. Um, but I would ask that the engineering department relook at that because Eagle may not approve that. That kills the project or they have to double the cost of the utilities. It's a major point.
Anybody else? I guess since it's a variance, Commissioner Foster, do you have anything?
Um, no questions, um, on the variance, but I do, um, would, I would love to hear responses on the issues that Commissioner Cruz brought up.
Commissioner Weber?
As far as the variances go, I guess I'm more concerned that the fire department signed off on it. What I saw about reducing the, the cul-de-sac, that was the first thing I thought about. Fire marshal feels comfortable with that, then I'd like to question.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
I have nothing to add to what has already been said. I agree with the other commissioners.
Commissioner Lee?
Um, the more you look at things, I do have questions. Mine are really, how is he going to make this thing work? These are built, these are building envelopes that I see on this drawing, right?
Right.
Meaning the building can go within this space. I'm looking at nine, I'm trying to configure a home that can go in this site. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a hard site to deal with. And I'm looking at all the wetlands, and I'm saying to myself, this is a comment, this doesn't have to do with the variance. There's a lot of wetland on this property and we're trying to shoehorn something that I'm not sure the houses can even go in there, that's something decent, you know? So my concern is over for the, and it's looking at it again, when you look at it in detail and try to figure out how to put something in the site. That's, that's a concern. Every one of these, I mean, 40 feet by 48 feet, you're going to put a house. A garage is 20 with. These are small homes, so I'm not sure what market, I'm not sure, you know, I think personally, I'm looking out for the developer. I think they need to know how, what they're going to build in here to help them understand what the market's going to be. Because there's only 19 units total. I mean, will that be enough to justify making enough money to make this profitable? So I'm looking at overall. So I just put those comments from me, just in the record. Concerned about the wetlands, there's a lot of it. Sometimes you look at a site, you know, this may not be a good site to build on. I'm just saying.
Thank you. And Commissioner Watkins?
No questions, Madam Chair.
All right. I can't- Sure.
Refresh my memory, Patrick. Property was approved for-
Yeah, previous development was attached two unit buildings, and there were 12 of those buildings, so there were 24 units previously approved. And then that development didn't work out for a number of different reasons. So instead of having the two unit attached coming back, they decided to go detached in fewer units. Uh, yeah, same applicant. It was, and I think they have to go back through Eagle to do wetland permits. So if they haven't already gotten the permit, they're going to have to go back and get it again. In this, in the blue area are wetlands to remain, and the crosshatch area are wetlands that they're proposing to fill. But that's all subject to Eagle approval.
Do I hear a motion? Crickets.
I've got it, Madam Chair. It's fine. I move to recommend approval of variances to Section 82-124-4 and Section 82-124-6B of the condominium ordinance to permit the non-boulevard cul-de-sac road of Cherry Hill Preserve be less than 110 feet in diameter on parcels number 71-052-99-0042-000 and 71-052-99-0044-001 and 71-052-99-0044-002, provided the cul-de-sac with complies, complies with is what that should say. Got to type over there. Complies with the applicable fire code.
Go ahead, support.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber, the W's have it. Commissioner Eggenberger, could you, any further discussion? I'm sorry. Great. I don't see any, so let's call the vote, Commissioner Eggenberger.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber?
Yes. All right, excellent. So we will see this again soon. Very good. Next item on our agenda is the zoning ordinance discussion regarding electric vehicle infrastructure. Patrick, please give us more of an intro.
Okay, hopefully this one is a, is a quick one. Back when we had the public hearing on January 8th of this year, and we sent a public notice for amendments to Articles 4 and also Articles 17, 18, 22, and 23. And we considered the ordinance for all those articles, but when we drafted the motion in, at the January meeting, we only included Article 4 for the motion and not Article 17, 18, 22, and 23. So at this time, we recommend readoption of the motion to include those articles. That was a typographical error that we had in the January 8th packet. And again, because we already had the public hearing on those sections, the public hearing for those additional sections was held. And we had that discussion then, so there's no need to redo the public hearing, it's just cleaning up the motion. There have been no changes to the ordinance since the January 8th meeting either, so it's the exact same ordinance that was presented with those additional articles.
Thank you. Anybody want to make a motion or discuss this?
I will. I move to recommend approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance to add Section 4.03, amend Articles 17.00, 18.00, 22.00, and 23.00, which include provisions for electric vehicle charging infrastructure as stated in the attached ordinance proposal.
Second.
All right, we have, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? All right, Commissioner Eggenberger, could you call the vote?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber?
Yes. Excellent. Very good. We now have some new business. We have the Canton Township Fire Station Number 4, considering site plan for parcels, parcel number 138-99-0009-702, which is located on the southwest corner of Michigan Avenue and South Lily Road. The proposed use is a new fire station. Patrick, please tell us more.
Okay, so for many years, Canton Township has planned for a fourth fire station at the southeast, in the southeast part of the community. And fire services are currently provided from Fire Station Number 1, which is near the next door to the Township Administration Building, Fire Station Number 2, which is on the north side of Warren, west of Hagerty, and Fire Station Number 3, which is in Cherry Hill Village on the east side of Denton Road, north of Cherry Hill. The proposed location for Fire Station Number 4 is on 7.8 acres of township-owned property at the southwest corner of Michigan Avenue and Lily Road. With about 25% of the service calls in the community coming from the southeastern quadrant, a fire station in this area will reduce response times nearby and has been long planned in the area. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires the planning commission to review and act on site plans for new building structures and parks on municipal property, so that's the purpose of the planning commission's review here. Also, Section 2.16B of the zoning ordinance requires that township-sponsored projects comply with the regulations of the zoning ordinance, except where there are regulatory provisions of the ordinance that hinder Canton's ability to provide for necessary and desirable public services. The Township Board, upon recommendation of the planning commission, shall determine the applicability of specific regulatory provisions to public projects sponsored by the township. Therefore, wherever this project does not comply with a particular regulation in the zoning ordinance, we make a finding in our staff report regarding whether a regulation hinders Canton's ability to provide for necessary and desirable public services. And the first area I want to mention is that the, the property is located in the industrial zoning district, specifically the GI, General Industrial Zoning District, which is the heaviest industrial zoning district in the community. And municipal buildings are not listed as permitted or special land uses in the district, although they are noted as special land uses in the residential districts. And the reason for that is mostly that there's a question of incompatibility of the general industrial district and municipal buildings. If it were a township hall in a heavy industrial area, it might not be the best place. But when it comes to emergency services and fire services, the next door neighbors for an industrial district don't really matter much, because it's about response times and service to the community. So we think it's for those reasons that municipal buildings are not specifically noted in the general industrial zoning district. But in this case, they are compatible uses with the surrounding area, located at the intersection of two major roads, and suitable for the area. So pursuant to Section 2.16B of the zoning ordinance, we find that having a fire station as a permitted use on the site is necessary and desirable for public services in this part of the community. In our staff letter, we have several comments on circulation, lighting, signage, landscaping, et cetera. So I'll kind of skip past those and summarize it here, so that we can have a broader discussion with the applicants and the planning commission, and then we can circle back to some of these topic-based items later. Our recommendation is approval of the site plan for Fire Station Number 4 on the subject tax parcel, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including compliance with the lighting, landscaping, signage, and dumpster enclosure requirements of the zoning ordinance, and accept those modifications recommended pursuant to Section 2.16B of the zoning ordinance for land use and modifications approved pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance for the required foundation and frontage shrubs to be located elsewhere in a front yard area. With the landscaping, there are some areas where we recommend modifications. There are other areas where we don't necessarily recommend modifications at this point. But if we find out during the site development portion that there are additional modifications for landscaping recommended, we can always come back to a future planning commission meeting. So there's nothing really pressing related to landscaping there that we see. And then with regard to the lighting, signage, and dumpster enclosure, those are fairly straightforward things that we think can be reconciled on revised plans and reviewed by staff. So there weren't major issues there where we felt like we couldn't bring it to the planning commission without a condition of approval. So that concludes our staff report for this, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Does the project sponsor have anything to add?
Good evening. Mike Malone with Partners in Architecture, and we have Nate Ringholz, he's the project architect on the project. We do have a colored board, and I'm sorry, Jamie. Jamie's in charge, so. We failed to give you a colored picture in, in the submittal here, so we apologize for that. So we printed out one, just so you can see what it looks like. It's pretty much identical to Station Number 2. We did that project a few years back. The only difference here is, is really there's no hose tower. We have a hose tower at the Station 2. It's not needed here. But the building is primarily the same, it's configured very similarly. It's a three bay fire station, about 13,400 square feet, somewhere in that range. All the materials are going to be identical, so it's going to look just like the other one there, so. All the, the comments that, that Patrick had sent over, not an issue for, for us, or, or Jamie, or Chris at all, so. We'll open up for questions, I guess.
It's not your first planning commission hearing, is it?
No.
Okay.
I was here for Fire Station 2.
Okay, very good.
I'm good too. I mean, we're just very excited, obviously, to get this thing going again, so we appreciate being here before you tonight, and look forward to working with you.
Sure, thank you. All right. I'm sure the audience would love to see your rendering too, so. You can turn it around. I mean, it's very nice. Yeah, all right. Commissioner Cruz, do you have any questions or thoughts?
Fully support the fire department.
Yeah.
I just want to make one point about the same thing. I, I just noticed sidewalks are not required on Lily, is that right?
When we looked at this, the applicant is proposing sidewalks on the west side of Lily from Michigan Avenue southward to the Northern Entrance Drive, and then there's a sidewalk termination there. And one of the reasons that we didn't recommend continuing is that it, it goes all the way south on Lily, Lily to the landfill. So in some areas, we don't want to put the sidewalk in yet where it may encourage walking to an area that we don't want the public to go. So it just, maybe someday we will, especially if there's ever a repurposing of the landfill that allows public access and walking. Just, at this point, the site isn't ripe for additional sidewalks. And also because it's public property, if we ever have public access to it, and like, say it was recreation or trails, that's something the sidewalk could go in, or the township could go into its sidewalk fund for, to connect.
And the fire department has future plans for the south of the fire station where we propose it. That would be another opportunity to provide additional sidewalks at that time.
I like how along Michigan Avenue, you know, the applicant went around the tree, so it, it, you know, it can be done, you know, basically.
What?
So, right there, so, perfect.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
All right, Commissioner Foster?
I will just say that I'm very excited to be voting on this tonight, Deputy Commissioner Raffiner. I know you have been talking about this fire station for a long time, and I'm glad we're finally able to begin to bring it to fruition. I would be remiss if I didn't think to thank the state of Michigan for the $7 million that it costs to build on this fire station and, and the appropriation that came from Rupp Porey and Senator Polhanke. And I'm very excited that it is going to be built with alternate, or alternative energy. So, very exciting things coming to Canton. Congratulations.
Commissioner Weber, can you top that?
The only question I have, it's very nice.
I can hear Mike.
My mouth is working.
It is.
Question I have is firefighters are going to be staying here.
Actually, I, I think they're, they're so excited about it as well, that they, they'll be able to deal with it down there as well.
Air filtration system or something like that?
We think there might be something like that built, you know, maybe later on, but nothing, I mean, there's nothing right now. I know you're teasing a little bit, right? I get it, yeah, it's the-
That's a good project.
I'm sure there'll be some nicknames for it, some building nicknames.
Project, though.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Commissioner Eggenberger?
No, I think it's a great project. Excited to see it.
No comments. I mean, I like the project. Will it reduce our homeowners' insurance, maybe?
I mean, two major fires. It really does make an impact on our ISO rating, which is an insurance rating. And one of the last times that they came out, we went from a five to a three. We're expecting with extra resources for that to officially increase to-
Oh, I'm in. Reduce my insurance.
Commissioner Watkins?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Great, excellent. Well, I, I agree. I think this will be a very nice project and looking forward to seeing it built. And I'm glad you're going right in front of the methane burn-off thing, whatever that is, yeah.
I get a lot of calls about that.
I bet you do.
So it'll make our response times for that really quick as well.
Very good. Very good. All right, entertaining a motion?
I move to approve the site plan for Fire Station Number 4 on Tax Parcel 138-99-0009-702, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including compliance with the lighting, landscaping, signage, and dumpster enclosure requirements of the zoning ordinance, except those modifications recommended pursuant to Section 2.16B of the zoning ordinance for land use and modifications approved pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance for the required foundation and frontage shrubs to be located elsewhere in the front yard area.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Commissioner Eggenberger, could you call the vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber?
Yes. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And Patrick, what are the next steps?
The next steps are, this will proceed to the Township Board for any additional approval. The state statute states that the planning commission approves it, so ultimately, even though that authority's there, the Township Board also approves many site plans. But for all intents and purposes, by approving the budget and bidding and approving the plans, you know, they either approve it beforehand, if not ad- plans, you know, they either approve it beforehand, if not after.
Okay.
When will this be built? When will it be up and running? Sorry.
We're projected to issue the project for bids in July of this year. So the township board hopefully will award it sometime in September, start construction probably October. So it'll be, you know, 12 months of construction, plus or minus.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Great. Very good. And our next item is S&amp;J Asphalt. We're considering a site plan amendment for parcels located on Michigan Ave, properties located on the south side of Michigan Avenue between South Lots and Hanan Road. The proposed site plan amendment is to install a solid metal fence instead of the wood fence that was previously approved. Patrick, tell us all about it.
Thank you. When S&amp;J Asphalt was approved last year for the site plan amendment, it included having a six-foot-high, pressure-treated wood privacy fence around the perimeter where the vehicles, equipment, and fuel will be stored. And recently, as the applicant is looking at doing the build-out, one of the concerns the applicant has is the long-term viability and maintenance and repair and reconstruction of a wood fence. And so the applicant has asked if they can do a steel fence, and they provided specifications and pictures that are in the packet this evening. We reviewed the plans with our fence inspector in the building division, and neither planning division staff or the building division staff have any objections or concerns to a steel fence. If it was something like sheet metal or something that wasn't designed as a fence, we would probably have concerns over rusting and durability and aesthetics. But based on the fence brochure that was provided, if this is the manufacturer and provider where they've manufactured the metal for the express purpose of functioning like a fence, then we would recommend this type of product rather than, you know, something that's just metal and we don't really know what it's going to look like. This material has been designed to function as a fence, as a screen. So we think it'll be more durable than a wooden fence and more consistent with what the applicant wants to do in terms of screening and having something long-term there at the site. The reason that we're here for the site plan amendment is that the ordinance is very specific. And in Section 5.08A6, the ordinance requires that the fencing be redwood, cedar, or number-one pressure-treated wood. I think this is a provision that may have been part of the original ordinance back in 1989 and maybe not adopted since. Since then, there have been advances in fences for vinyl. Vinyl fencing has come a long way. Metal fencing has come a long way. So it's something that, long-term, we may update this part of the ordinance to see if we have something that we don't have to come back to the planning commission for or otherwise included as part of the site plan review. Had this been proposed at the time the site plan was approved last year, we probably would have brought it through the process and recommended approval. But this is something that's kind of a late add now that they're doing the actual construction and the bid specs and everything like that. So this is something that it's a little bit later in the process, but probably well before the fence is going to be going up. So it's a pretty good time to do that now that construction is taking place. So staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment for S&amp;J Asphalt at the subject site pursuant to Section 5.08A4 of the zoning ordinance, which permits the planning commission to modify the screening requirements and to permit the screening fence on the approved site plan to be solid steel as proposed, provided the fencing is maintained to prevent rust, corrosion, and deterioration. So with that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? Awesome. Could you just tell us who you are and your address for the record, please?
I'm Dylan Fagan. I work with DJ Maltese Construction. I'm the project manager on this project. And the owner's actual main concern is security. A wooden fence is not secure at all, especially with a bar next door. We've had problems with dwellers coming in during construction. So this fence is a lot more secure than a wooden fence would be. And also, it won't corrode or rust, I believe, is the problem with the chain-link fence.
Can we see that?
Yeah.
It's got a steel.
Steel?
Yeah.
Steel, yes.
How do you keep corrosion?
Uh...
Okay, galvanized steel. Thank you.
Certain coating on it that prevents, uh, prevents it from doing that.
Almost, it's like a baked-on paint finish.
Oh, okay.
I love show and tells.
That's true.
I do, too.
I know. Why didn't we cover this in the fence ordinance?
You want the short answer or the long answer?
You know, I was thinking the same thing. I said.
All right.
Well, we'll be back with the fence ordinance before too long.
Can't wait. It's time for a motion.
Can we do the sign ordinance, too, while we're at it?
Yeah.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
I move, Madam Chair, I move to approve the site plan amendment for S&amp;J Asphalt paving at 39571 Michigan Avenue, parcel 141-99-0013-000 at 39603 Michigan Avenue, parcel 141-99-0012-000 pursuant to Section 5.08A4 of the zoning ordinance to permit the screening fence on the approved site plan to be solid steel as proposed, provided the fencing is maintained to prevent rust, corrosion, and deterioration. Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Egenberger, could you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber?
Yes. Excellent. What's the next step, Patrick?
So the site plan would be amended, and the planning commission can do site plan amendments to approved plans. So the next step will just be updating the items in our records, and the applicant can go ahead and apply for the fence permit.
Good. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is Canton High School addition. We're considering a site plan for parcels, as noted here, at 8415 North Canton Center Road. The property is located on the west side of North Canton Center Road between Sheldon Center Road and Joy Road. The proposed use is, in addition to the Phase III building, for a multipurpose room to include team room, concessions, and restrooms. Pursuant to the revised school code, Act 451 of 1976, the site plan review is for recommendations and comments. We have no jurisdiction, in other words.
Right.
Tell us more.
Exactly.
Well, the way that the state law is written, the revised school code is it states that unless the site is located in a city or village, which this is not, the governing board of a public school, meaning the school board, shall not build or expand a high school building on a site without first obtaining the site plan or submitting the site plan to the local zoning authority for administrative review as provided under that subsection. And so there's a procedure to it where they submit the plan for comments, and then the community has 60 days to review the plan, and the local zoning authority, which is us, responds in writing with any comments on the plan. When the school district gets the comments, they can either incorporate them into revised plans, or they can respond to our comments with a reason why they didn't change the plan. So the way the state law is written, the township's comments are advisory-only, and they're meant more towards looking at compliance with the zoning ordinance, looking at surrounding areas and the impact, and trying to make comments that may improve the site. And the reason that this is before the planning commission is that this part of the law states that it applies to an expansion of a high school building only if the expansion will result in the square footage of the building being increased by at least 20%. And that Phase III building that they're proposing to add on to is technically more than a 20% increase. So because of that increase in that particular building, that makes the plan subject to the zoning review for review and comments. So that's why it's before the planning commission this evening. And so really, a lot of our comments are more geared towards the addition itself. The addition itself, it'll be a brick addition. It would be consistent with our architecture standards of our ordinance. It'll have rooftop screening for the mechanical equipment screening, which is a good thing. There are some, there are some recommendations we have with a photometric plan recommending that their light fixtures comply with the township ordinances with being downward-facing and shielded, although that may not be practical with the proposed stadium that they're going to build farther in the northeast corner of the site. But with the exception of any large stadium lights, we recommend that the lights comply. There isn't a landscape plan that's proposed, and the applicant's, the school district's not required to comply with the landscaping requirements. But we are recommending some onsite landscaping, especially where the use abuts adjacent residences with a new stadium, potential lights, noises, activities. Some additional evergreen screening would be helpful to some of the neighbors. We also recommend that if any chain-link fencing is replaced along the roads, that they recommend that, or I recommend, or we recommend that the district consider like a vinyl-coated chain-link fence. It looks nicer. It's a little bit more durable. It doesn't show the rust. One of the more significant changes on the site is there's a drive that is between Salem High School and Canton High School, and it's not always open, but when it is, it allows travel between the two districts without having to go back onto the roadway network. As part of the proposal, the applicants will be closing that drive. And on this aerial photo, this aerial photo was taken roughly about a month ago. So they've already started some onsite construction. And the state, the building permits are through the state of Michigan. This, there used to be a road that goes through here, a drive. And so there's a loop here. This loop will remain, so it'll remain as a traffic loop, but there will be no connection between the two schools. So that will inevitably lead to more cars on Joy Road and Canton Center Road. I don't know how it impacts the traffic during the peak times when those cars go there, but that is an effect of the site that's outside of the addition boundaries that we're looking at. But while we're looking at the entire site, we did want to raise that as an issue and as a concern. It likely won't affect the layout of the site of, or any kind of additional connections, but it is something that we wanted to note for the district's consideration. So our recommendation, looking at the plan, we recommend the following changes to the plan. First, providing traffic control signage along the drive loop and elsewhere throughout the site as needed. Second, providing a photometric plan and light specification sheets, and that all fixtures be downward-facing in accordance with the ordinance, except for the large stadium lights. Third, we recommend considering evergreen landscaping north and east of the proposed stadium. Fourth, we recommend replacing any existing chain-link fencing with vinyl-coated chain-link fencing if replacement is proposed. Fifth, we recommend providing elevation renderings of the proposed stadium in the outdoor building, if they're available, and using exterior materials for the outdoor storage building that match the primary building on the site, which is brick. And then finally, providing additional details to ensure that the rooftop units are screened pursuant to the zoning ordinance. It looks like those details are on the plan. We just wanted to see the additional details and specifications. And unfortunately, in the formatting of the model motion, it looks like you got bullet points instead of numbers. But these are just recommended changes. Again, the district doesn't have to incorporate them. These are not necessarily conditions of approval. It's just recommendations for additional changes to the site beyond whatever else the planning commission may have in its review of the plan here. So that concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Does anybody from the commission have anything to add or discuss regarding the project?
We're not, we're not here to comment on the state.
I think we can comment on the site plan. The reason that we're reviewing the plan is because of the building addition change. So because of the building addition is over 20%, that brings the plan to the planning commission for comment. And because it's part of a larger plan, I think we can comment anything on the plan. The very worst that would, that would happen is any comment that, or recommendation that comes out, they're not bound by it.
Adding on and adding on to this. Not that, not that I, this carries any weight or anything. If I were to vote on this, I wouldn't support it unless I knew that there was going to be some improvement maybe to traffic. That's all, sir.
Patrick, out of curiosity, is the school under the same heading as maybe a university, meaning they can buy land on their own? Do they have that capacity with the state? Meaning, we're commenting only because being a school like a university or so, they can do whatever they want. They can, you know, is that the same in this situation here, with the high school?
I think it might depend on the university, because I think some of them have different rules versus others. It's pretty similar where suppose a school district bought a piece of property and wanted to build a new high school, we would be bound by state law in terms of what we review. So if it's a new high school, our comments may only be advisory. We may not have any impact. So to answer your question, if the school were to acquire more property or to build a larger addition, we'd be back here at the same type of level of review. I think we might be a little bit more specific with a new facility and getting into more detail about the overall impacts as opposed to an addition on to an existing facility.
Right. Thank you. I just wanted, I was curious.
Yeah. Why'd they get rid of the connecting road? That makes no sense. I mean, that move alone, like you said, is going to introduce more traffic to Joy and Canton Center. If this project were brand-new, that would be an essential piece in the approval of this project, and now they've just eliminated that.
But again, we don't, we don't really have to say.
Trying to remember from my days of traffic.
Yeah, you could have widened it. There's a number of things you could have done rather than eliminate it. That can't be the reason. I'd like to know what that reason is.
How often was it open? Was it before and after schools? I don't remember how often that driveway. Mm-mm. No, it was closed at times.
You know about this.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, because it only opened after school. I just didn't remember.
Through the chair, if I could. I think the utility roadway still, if you take a look at the SAT, utility roadway still exists for, I guess I'll call it, staff and personnel to move throughout the park, and that's in the interior of the site. And from watching just some of the...
From watching just some of the public events as related to the actual bond process and being able to create and develop this new expansion, hey, I think the land was at a premium. I guess it's the best way to say it. And in order to be able to facilitate, and Commissioner Weber said it best, seven, almost 7,000, imagine, 7,000 kids go through there every single day, and to be able to facilitate, again to your question, numerous simultaneous events, yes, there can be a JV football game happening at the same time as a varsity football game for one school, and then they have to stagger the times because you've got JV from the other school who has to use the other field. So now, what they've done is they've tried to eliminate some of that scheduling conflict by adding the field and at least adding an additional piece of capacity to the site to be able to facilitate the three schools and the numerous sports activities that have to occur. So I think what I said prior is, yeah, that land is at a premium, and I think the design team that put this together looked to utilize every single inch of it for the park.
But I guess my issue is more with probably the powers that be outside.
I think you're absolutely right.
Even, even before Plymouth was built.
I think you're right, and I appreciate that, and I think we're back to our good old Wayne County discussion again, but I'll leave that alone for tonight, and we'll move ahead.
When you say utility road, you're talking about...
Yeah, within the, within the park itself.
Now, that road's often closed. I mean, it's not...
It's close to the public, for sure, yeah.
And I get why, because it goes through some of that area.
Staff and personnel.
Staff and students.
Who wants to make a motion?
If I can help out there. I move to recommend the following changes to the site plan for Canton High School at 8415 North Canton Center, tax parcel 013-99-0007-701. Item one, providing traffic control signage along the drive loop and elsewhere as needed. Item two, providing a photometric plan and light specification sheets, and that all fixtures be downward-facing in accordance with section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance, except for the large stadium lights. Item three, considering evergreen landscaping north and east of the proposed stadium. Item four, replacing any existing chain-link fencing with vinyl-coated chain-link fencing if replacement is proposed. Item five, unless I said five already, one, two, three, four, no, I'm on five, providing elevations, renderings of the proposed stadium and outdoor storage building if available, and using exterior materials for the outdoor storage building that match the primary building on site. And six, providing additional details to ensure the rooftop units are screened pursuant to section 2.26 of the zoning ordinance.
All right, we have a motion and support by the team that seems to be leading in our motions and supports for the evening, Commissioner Watkins and Commissioner Lee. Any further discussion? None, I would ask Commissioner Egenberger to call the vote.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber.
Yes. Great, so you will pass along the comments, and they will do, they will do what they want, right?
Yeah, and they may come back with some changes, some items that may be doable or more information that they have. I think, you know, we may see some changes, but with the overall access management, the way that they have the loop baked in and that pedestrian area between the addition on the building, which includes concessions and the stadium itself, I don't see a vehicle connection between the two sites. But I think for some of these things, I think we may see some plan changes.
Okay, very good, thank you. And we have discussed master plan on the agenda, but there's nothing in the packet, so tell us...
And no Aaron.
No Aaron to tell us any fun and exciting things.
No, that'll be the May 20 meeting in two weeks, so we will have a meeting there. Just a short update on it is, we have been receiving some articles of the master plan from McKenna, and we're reviewing them internally, making markups and changes. So that's undergoing a rigorous internal review, going back and forth, so that's continuous, so we're hard at work with that, and Aaron will be ready to present much more at the May 20 meeting.
Awesome. Very good. Anything else?
Motion to a chair manager.
Guess there's nothing else.
I'm not going to add anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I got, I got one quick question. In the applications that you have at the end here, trying to look at what's coming up, the top Canton one, is that, does that mean we're assisting the trailer to that plan, or is it...
That is the next step in the process. They're coming back for the final PDD. So when we looked at it before, that was preliminary PDD, so now they're at final PDD. We're still doing our internal staff review on that, so we're still going through that and seeing what changes they made, documenting those, and seeing if there's anything still outstanding. So I expect that, I don't know, about June, maybe July, Planning Commission, depending on how quickly this goes. I have not seen any movement there in my first review of the plans, but we haven't given our staff comments yet back, so that'll be some questions that will be put into the applicant, knowing that it came up at the Planning Commission and the board level.
I'm a little alarmed by the fact that they've called themselves Top Cannon LLC on page two of their PDD district review application. Top Cannon. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just had, related to that, because we've been mentioning Ford Road, are we taking any of these developments to Wayne County, letting them know we're adding all this to, it's delayed four years, right? The Canton, excuse me, Ford Road expansion's delayed four years. Four years' time, can we generate more money at an extension beyond where it is now, past the freeway, maybe to the light at Sam's? And then west all the way past, or at least to...
West to Canton Center.
Canton Center. Like, that's worth the time, and it's worth the money, because those developments are going to come in about four years, and we're going to be looking at them, can you fix our problem, again? And that's not a good time. So is that being approached?
My understanding is that because of some of the money that's tied to the project itself, the project has a very limited scope that it's kept for a number of years, so any changes to the scope eastward or westward, I don't think are easy, if not impossible.
Okay.
So I can ask...
So it's a new project? You get what I'm saying? Okay, we got this one, it's a new project, we're going to add to it. So I'm even suggesting that, that's all. Because I know it's going to happen, you know?
Well, eventually, there's going to be development out Ford Road, out to back road. In the ideal world, it should go all the way to back.
Yeah. This is a suggestion.
So I think we've had a motion to...
Yeah, we don't have support.
Support.
Do you want to finish the meeting at his chair?
Nope, just trying to move things along.
All right. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, off we go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.